Good afternoon, it's two o'clock, I'm going to follow the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, uh, resources and infrastructure committee meeting to order. We have four members of the committee attending in person, we have Jim Grimold, Jim Webb, Don Howell, and Steve Seber. I have Mark Meeks online who is ill and he's requesting to attend remotely. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, yes, I'm recording, uh, I have a, a pretty bad eye infection and just, it's not, I'm not feeling really well, uh, requesting to participate in this meeting remotely, per code section five, four, nine, five, three. And I guess I'm asking, requesting permission.
Okay, so I need a vote of the committee to allow him to, um, attend remotely. And do I have a motion, Mr. Howell, and do I have a second? Mr. Grimald, I'm going to do a roll call, Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Grimald?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Mr. Seber?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Dodson, can you go ahead and move him over to a participant, I don't know how to do that. Okay, um, we need to know whether you have any other individuals eighteen years or older, present in the room at your location. Mark?
No, there will not be anybody in this room, other than me.
Okay, okay, and you need to participate, you need both your audio and your video.
I need to, okay.
Have your audio and your video turned on?
Yes.
Okay, how do I move him to be a participant?
I've asked him, I promoted him, so he has to accept the promotion.
Okay, you have to accept the promotion to be a participant. There you go, okay. And now we have all five committee members attending, one, one via remote. Um, staff present is the general manager, Matthew McElany, our confidential administrative assistant, Haley Dodson, our administrative department manager slash finance manager, Lee Fritz. We have our utilities manager, Jim Green. We have our program manager, Tristan Reaper. We have our wastewater supervisor, Tony Arco. And members of the public present are Dennis Dujic, Alan Dean, and remotely, we have Elizabeth Benhausen. Maybe I have a very, very short, hopefully a product, uh, chairman's report. And this is just a few highlights of what the board did relating to R and I. The board approved the agreement for consultant services with MKN and Associates for the on-call engineering service. The board adopted the resolution declaring a tractor, a water tank, and a water pump as surplus, and authorized the sale by the general manager. And the board discussed and approved the acceptance of funding for the purchase of a Case 580 EV tractor. And I know that we discussed this at our February meeting and everyone had questions. And when Mr. Green does his utilities report, if, um, there's anything you need to know, um, he can answer your questions, um. I just want to let you know also that the weed abatement deadline this year is July first. So it's moved up, um, two weeks. Okay, so, um, committee member communications. Anybody on the committee have anything they wish to report? Anything regarding your activities? No? Okay, so we have our utilities manager report, Mr. Green.
Fantastic, right, thank you, Chair Dean. Um, I'll be here with some updates and then we'll field some questions about the tractor. I know there's some still residual questions out there that you guys may have. And, uh, then we'll proceed on with the rest of the agenda items. Um, some big fresh topics that came out, um, for our Stewart Street Tanks project, uh, we had to do a CDP. We had a pre-application, application meeting, several meetings over the course of the last year. So our, um, C, DRC twenty twenty four dash zero zero three eight is approved. Um, Coastal didn't have any appeals or any further questions. So it went from temporary approved to fully approved. However, we do have some building permitting that we got thrown in at the last minute. Um, so the planning portion of that's done. We have to submit a building permit because of the retaining wall will reach an eight-foot height due to some of the slope there at that property. So we have submitted those plans, um, today to the building department and will kind of try and expedite that as much as we can there as well. Uh, on the EPA funding for this project, we're nearing the end. Uh, they threw a couple additional things at us at the end, they wanted a work plan, a budget narrative. We had to fill out several applications, an SR four-two-four, and SR four-two-four A. Uh, those are being submitted this week to LEAT at EPA, so we look to be awarding funds for that here shortly. Um, I thank finance manager Denise here for throwing us some additional information as of late, so we can get those applications submitted back to them. Um, SR four roads, so Santa Rosa Well Four, Coast Union Road, we all understand and know about the agreement. We've gone, uh, we've begun kind of planning and developing that project for the road there. It's about an eight-hundred lineal foot road, that'll be twenty-foot riot, twenty-foot wide, and have fencing around it. That'll be our sole access to our well site for our chemical trucks and for water operations. Uh, we started by doing ground penetrating radar for the project. That's looking at all of the infrastructure underground, the PG&E, the cable, whatever irrigation lines that have been installed over the years there. And that was done, there, there's quite a bit underground there. So we're looking forward to working with our, our civil engineer on that and seeing how we can accommodate that road appropriately. Uh, we've also begun some, um, soils and geological engineering for the project. And, um, yeah, we're just working collaboratively with Coast Union on that. And we are probably looking at, uh, what, in July first or later start date for that. We're going to try and get it during, during summertime while the ground's dry and then while there's no students in school as well. Um, Tony's favorite project as of lately that's coming up is our LSB four. Uh, we had a pre-app meeting in early January, uh, where we met with the county and they were concerned. It's in a GSA, so a geological sensitive area. It's also in a terrestrial habitat, a TH. So we've begun, um, looking for contracting environmental for the project. And, uh, we've also begun contracting with Earth Systems to perform geo and engineering reports for that project as well. Uh, while we're on the wastewater topic, we'll talk about, um, superintendent Artho's new WDR, so that's our waste discharge requirements with water boards. Uh, it looks like this is kind of a milestone for water boards and us. Uh, this is something they've been wanting to update for years, as long as I've been here, as long as Tony's been a part about that. And we'll look like we're going to be closing that final documentation on that by the end of this month. Um, additionally with that, it will include ZLD pilot operation. So it will be fully permitted for ZLD pilot operation and for regular operation with this permit. So, um, there's some things in there that, uh, like the TDS, burning average, we might have some issues with, so we're going to work with, um, water boards as we get into that permit on meeting those requirements. AMI, so our register, um, meter registers that we're replacing right now, we're up to eighteen hundred units installed at a thirty-five hundred. So we're well above, um, yeah, what we expected or anticipated as far as installation, and that's going very well. I want to give a special thanks to some of our staff who's really helped execute this internally, and that's Eric Johnson on our utility side, and then Scott on our admin side, who's, um, really taken a lot of the keying and entering and, uh, the kind of administration portion of this. So that's been fantastic though, thank you very much to those two as well. Um, SST, I'll let Tony touch on in a little bit. Um, so that's pretty much the major stuff. Tristan, did you want to touch on anything here? We've got so many projects that, uh, you could touch on, did you want to?
Um, no, no.
Okay, maybe we'll have Tony touch on the SST and then we can field some questions about the EV tractor.
Okay, on the SST, they finally got the contracts untangled and have, uh, are going through Cushman. That'll be the main mechanical and civil contractor onsite. They've got Smith Electric doing all the electrical. We've got, uh, also, who else do we have? Uh, Smith Electric, and then we have, uh, North, uh, North County Tanks doing the tanks.
Passo Tank, yeah.
Passes.
That's real stink.
And, uh, they'll be doing the refurbishing of the South Digestor and also doing some of the, uh, refurbishing on the North Digestor. Uh, what's going to be happening in the next week, they've been out last week, they were doing layouts for mechanical pads for the EQ tanks and are the EQ pumps, and then also for the EQ blowers. They, uh, we have most of the equipment onsite. They are, there's a couple of items that they're going to be taking care of on coatings for, uh, the EQ blowers. They're redoing a couple of items on the, or some coatings on the EQ blowers. And then there's also going to be, uh, we have, uh, FRM coming out to, uh, look at the, the equalization pumps, border pumps, and they're going to be doing, uh, uh, rotating and doing some maintenance on it prior to install. Um, so the major portion of the project's going to be starting in one week. We're going to start having, uh, Cushman out and, and, uh, passable tanks. And they'll be working on the tanks. The last week, we've been draining tanks and cleaning tanks and preparing to pull air headers and going through what pieces and parts we want to keep and what's going away. Uh, and, and making sure that we've marked out where they're supposed to do a lot of their spot repairs and added a couple of spot repairs onto that. Um, after, after the, uh, EQ tanks get refurbished and ready to go, we'll be draining the, uh, aeration basin, the number two aeration basin and, uh, and we'll get it prepped for them to come in and replace air headers, put in a, um, a baffle and mixers and the new, get ready to put in the new pumps and also the new control systems, the DO probes, all, all that, uh, prior, hopefully relatively soon, beginning in May. So, uh, there'll be a lot to go on. The, uh, they submitted a schedule to us. Uh, it was a draft schedule. On the draft schedule, the main issue that was coming up was the electrical panels and, and buckets for for the MCC two or one and three switch gears for MCC one and MCC three. And, uh, what's going to need to happen is they're going to have to have those to transfer over from one train to the next train. So that's kind of the critical path right now. So that is the one holdup that we have. Uh, I told them to run their schedule outside of, take, disconnect that critical path to see where the next critical path is, so that we don't have any interruptions in between or surprises in between because the electrical, uh, was, was drawing the whole critical path, so it, it, I asked them to just give us the backup critical path. So, like I said, we would understand what pieces and components would go in and what quarters would go on. And that's, that's what I have right now. Uh, hopefully, cross of fingers, will be done with the majority of the project by the end of this year.
Well, that's great news. Okay, um, did, did you want to?
Um, maybe just a final touch up on projects, um, the regular CDP for the WRF. We submitted all that, thank you very much, General Andrew McElhany and yeah, Ms. Dodson, Tristan and I, we put, what, fifteen documents together, all over three hundred and twenty pages. That was submitted over sixty days ago, which is usually about the appeal process time. We understand this will probably have an elongated, uh, evaluation period, but, um, two months has been into since submission and, uh, we haven't heard any word back or any appeals, so.
So no requests for further information?
Not at this time. I'm sure there will be. Oh, absolutely. Mr. Freund, uh, asked for an extension because there's a lot of documentation. So I imagine as they sift through this, there will be follow-up, you know, informational requests. Hopefully it'll be a lot smaller than what we took forward. You know, but anticipate some follow-up. I'll check with them via email and have an update by next month.
Okay.
Very good, in the meantime, we're still doing some of the coastal, uh, preferred or requested surveys, like the protocol survey in Simpson Creek Road, um, Simpson Creek and then Gordon, and night and day surveys have taken place. So some other, um, kind of efforts for that is going on, uh, behind the scenes as well. Next, Ben, I have a little? Yeah, please, yeah. So, uh, there's a lot of talk about biological reporting. We tried to explain at the board meeting, the biological reporting that we do is for the adaptive management plan. However, the Coastal Commission, in our conversations with them, talked about protocol level surveys that are what Miss Cleveland is doing or what Mr. Green is referring to, which is actually visiting and looking at species. So spending time at night looking at the red-legged frog and looking at steelhead and tidewater goby. That is what the Coastal Commission was asking about, so now we're doing a little bit of that preemptively, but it's not a requirement of the permitting process. Interesting. For the CDP, you know, that, that hasn't been requested from the county as part of the permitting process or regulatory requirement, as far as I understand. But the district is saying, okay, we know the Coastal Commission's going to want to see some level of data, so we'll proactively now adding that protocol will survey. Yes. I'm sorry. Nice, appreciate it, for elaborating. Um, if there's no other questions on any of the project update status, I'll touch briefly on the EV tractor. So since we brought this in February, there's some, um, actors have been out in the wild and been getting used by larger, uh, agencies and so forth. We've heard really good response, um, we've had basically like references from three different agencies saying, we've been able to get out and use this for eight hours of digging or for trenching. Um, we get four hours, what they call track time. So that's, if you were to drive it, you'd get about four hours of battery life. We don't have the very big community to drive around, so we, we think that this will meet our needs, absolutely. It is a love it and leave it deal. Um, I still need to find out, I put in a call to find out about how that voucher funding goes, if we're going to return it. So I'll get some specifics on that. Uh, some staff is scheduled for early next week to go down and get their hands on that and drive that. And, um, yeah, we're just really impressed with, um, some of the remarks and references by the other agencies who have tried this, so we think this is very suitable for us. Also, the voucher kind of came, uh, together very quickly at the end here, and there are three other entities, um, that are vying for this one tractor and this one voucher that are left. That was kind of why we expedited the process and didn't bring that back to you guys, so I apologize for that. But we don't want to lose our opportunity on this, uh, because they have one tractor. So after that is sold, the MSRP for that could go up as well. And that voucher is only for two hundred and ninety, it is not going to flex up or down based on MSRP. So that was our concern about getting that out there and taking advantage of it. Because as of right now, we do not have a tractor on hand for the whole district that has a loader bucket and, and stinger, you know, trenching operations, so. Yeah, with that said.
And just to add to what Mr. Green said, we're also, another project we're working on is getting an EV charger for the, for the wastewater plant. Um, and that's awaiting board approval, I believe, on in May, so. If we get that approval, we will, uh, repeat, proceed with construction, that should be done by the end of June. Then we'll have a, uh, fast starter for the electric vehicle that we bought and will buy.
And item four B talks about the funding we're going to get from PG&E and APCD for this, so. Yeah, we'll touch on that, and that'll kind of tie that all together as well.
So I did some research as well on the tractor, to, because I was concerned about the battery time and it has two different systems.
Two different, uh, motors, electronic motors, yeah.
So, um, what I read was encouraging, um, when it came to the board. I asked all of the questions that all of you asked. And the, the board was in, in favor of moving forward with the funding for this tractor. So your questions were asked, although you didn't hear the answers unless you watched the meeting. So do you, I'm sure that Mr. Green will be willing to take questions if you still have any.
I have one that I was reading the packet, uh, and there's some verbiage in there about with the, if the PG&E, the supplier of the power, uh, reserves the right to turn everything off if they need to, if for some reason, get in and do repairs on the charging station. Uh, no, I'm, I'm.
You're moving ahead to four B.
Oh, yeah, moving into four B, maybe, maybe I can wait. That might be better, I'll wait.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions on the tractor and the voucher and everything that he talked about? No? Okay, anything else on his report?
That's great.
Any of the items on his report? Any of the items on Mr. Artho's update on the SST, which we're very happy to hear? No? Okay, anybody online, oh, Mr. Dujic, do you have any questions?
I, I have comments, public comments, but.
We're not to that point yet.
Thank you, no questions.
Okay, anybody online have any comments or questions on the utilities report? Mr. Meeks, I can't see because I'm looking at attendees, so you, if, if you have anything to say, just chime in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no, um, public comment on the utilities report, we can move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. And I believe Mr. Dujic has something he would like to report on.
Thanks. Go, please. Um, what I'd like to talk about is, uh, referring back to the, um, the Hambria Community Services District Five Year Strategic Goals, twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, uh, Objective Status Report updated March fourth and fifth, twenty twenty-five. That, uh, document, uh, identifies the research of long-term water supply and storage solutions and identifying and assessing those long-term water supply and storage solutions as items that need to be tracked and, and commented on. And what I've handed out for the folks that are here is a, uh, just a discussion schedule, uh, of, and kind of a, an idea of how one might, um, track those items. In other words, put the, build the items up to the point where you can describe it in terms of what it's going to take to get it done. For example, for if we were talking about a direct potable reuse system, which is one of the potential items that's been identified, uh, for additional water supply, we might break it into, uh, eleven or twenty or thirty, uh, stages or, uh, task items. And so I've done this in eleven, eleven items. And I've identified the duration, typical duration of each of the items, such as CCSD staff conducting the initial feasibility study, board approving the feasibility study, feasibility study and funding, uh, and now analyze, and then moving on all the way to ultimately, uh, board's final approval, detailed design, construction commission. Um, so you might come up with a, a four-year schedule. And each of these items then, each of these potential water uh, resources, long-term large supply and storage solutions, could have its own little, uh, discussion, uh, including its, its, uh, hypothetical, uh, schedule and funding requirements to go along with that schedule and the process that's going to need to be built in. Then you can track that, uh, from meeting to meeting to meeting and just go through your checklist and say, well, we were supposed to finish this, um, initial feasibility study in two months, but we really haven't even started it yet. It will get started when this or that happens. That way, you're actually identifying real progress leading to meeting to meeting. What's happening now is all of these items that were discussed back a year ago or a year and a half ago, is the last time that they were discussed by the committee, uh, are just sitting there. They're not going anywhere, they're not being pursued, nothing's happening. And the best way to make that happen is to set, is to identify milestones and identify um, schedule of those milestones and track it. And then not, it's not about blame, it's about tracking. So if you don't make it great, it gets extended and you do what you need to do to move it. Anyway, that was the thing I wanted to bring up, uh, and one last tiny item is, um, the, uh, it would be good to incorporate the astero satellite leak detection uh, in your goals for reducing, uh, leak, leak losses. Um, and the same thing with your meters, because you've identified internally, staff has identified that having those smart meters and this leak detection system, well, has the potential to reduce leaks. But it hasn't been presented to the board in a quantified way that I've seen. And it would be good to quantify that and say, well, here's our goal. If, if we find what we expect to find, we ought to be able to can take our ten percent leaks and reduce them down to eight by, in a year. And that could be a real tangible savings that you're looking forward to, anyway, those are my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any public comment? I don't see any hands up. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the, um, approval of the minutes. So does anybody have any, um, thing in the minutes from the February eighteenth regular meeting and the February twenty-sixth joint special meeting that they see needs to be corrected or amended?
Wonderful minutes.
Yes, this was Mr. Webb's first shot at doing minutes.
Well, detailed and strategic.
I would do well.
And we're trying to get them cut down a bit to be a little more action minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, but, good job.
Yes. It got done.
I think he had a little help. Okay, so if no one has any, um, corrections in the minutes.
I have one slight correction, it's, it, it seems to be a little typo on, uh, four B. It's, uh, it's, it's pertaining to the contract not to exceed. It says contract if not to exceed, I think it's supposed to say is not to exceed twenty-five thousand annually.
Right, I missed that one too.
Minor, but.
Well, it makes a difference in what it means. Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt the minutes with that, do you mind correction? Okay, Mr. Grimald? Let's go with a second. Sir Howell, I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Grimald? Right, I, Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Mr. Seber?
Aye.
Mr. Meeks?
Aye.
Okay. The minutes were unanimously approved. Okay, so we are going to move on to, um, the CIP list. So we're going to be discussing the updated prioritize CIP lists. Um, it says general fund CIP budget request, but I don't necessarily have those, do we? We're just doing the, um, enterprise, okay? And considerations for the updated CIP list to the finance committee for review in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year preliminary budgets. And what you have in here, so it's friends. So everything in here is priority one, so these are all things that are being requested to be included in the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes.
Okay, um, there's one thing I have, um, to start with, the question.
Sure.
Um, you've got down here with the, what the assets are and the status, but we're looking at vehicles and it already says Case 580 EV that was purchased in nineteen eighty-nine, a twenty-year-old cycle, that should have been the diesel tractor in that, in that square, shouldn't it? Because it says it's going to be replaced with a 580 EV.
We put this on there preemptively, if we didn't get a budget adjustment in for this fiscal year to purchase the tractor in for this fiscal year, that we have that as part of the CIP for next fiscal year.
Okay.
If we missed out on the voucher, there's, there's, you know, one of many things could happen and this deal would fall through. So that's why we kind of place it on there. Um, again, this is just a draft.
Okay.
This, this is just for conversation, but.
But it's talking about the year purchased, the life cycle and the years of service, so doesn't that apply to the tractor we have now? And then you're going to replace it with the 580 EV?
Right.
You see, see what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So should this have been the diesel tractor?
We should have, yeah, provided that nomenclature on that.
Okay, so that first box, it should, shouldn't say EV right there, but you're going to replace it with the EV.
Mm-hmm.
So the cost of the case. So the cost of the case, case five eighty was one-ten, or is that the EV cost? I'm confused.
That will be the, so the way that we listed this, so like vehicles are the assets, that's what we're trying to procure CIP during the year. And then we're kind of giving you a little background on the unit or equipment that we're replacing, uh, but that. Is the cost of, the final cost of that new device or equipment going forward. So that would, one-ten would be the cost out the door for that tractor.
Got it.
So when you're looking at this chart. And you're looking at priority, your purchase, life cycle, years of service, that's on what we have now?
Yes, we're kind of giving you a reflection of the past on why we're replacing it.
And then replacement, anticipated replacement cost and life cycle, that's what you're looking at replacing or upgrading. What's in that first section? Okay, got it. Okay, do you want to go through this?
Yeah, I'd like to, if you guys, we can, if you guys have questions or we can dive into it, um. Obviously, we say the, the, the vehicles piece, which is a non-licensed vehicle, for those of you scoring on your budgets. Um, anyways, distribution, we'll get into the uh, well-field transmission main, which will most definitely take place during um, the next fiscal year. Not this fiscal year, so we're div- divided that between water and wastewater at about two million each.
And so for clarification, that's a project that's already approved.
Right.
We have budget for it, so this is like.
In addition.
In addition.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there could be some changes to that plan based on conversations we have with. The county, discussion with the San Simeon, projects could be delayed to accommodate. Some of those internal needs, so the temporary line that's in place, uh, Mister Green and I are comfortable that if we had to delay the project, that that line would be good. You know, for a significant amount of time while we investigate some of these other funding options.
So the cost, the cost column is additional, if, if it's already budgeted for this current fiscal year. This would be the additional amount that they need. Okay, got it, so.
Again, uh, this, this can kind of be a living document, that's why we're presenting in this session, so in. Changes or edits, we can definitely make. Uh, Pembroke Water Main, so um. That's a four-inch PVC main that has been in there for quite a while. Um, this is all going to come up during our water master plan. Uh, evaluation that we're doing over the year and will kind of prioritize um, some other areas, but this is kind of uh, one that's come up recently as. More of a priority, uh, we don't think that we're going to get adequate fire flow out of a four-inch main. We've had recent um, service issues there as far as service line failures. So that's something that the Water Superintendent was um, looking forward to putting on for this fiscal year or form.
What is, what is the length of that line? How much of that? Is that three hundred feet?
One thousand.
A thousand feet?
Yes. Quarter mile. And it's on a very vertical uh, piece of road and probably has about twenty-five services on.
Yeah, I think we've got twenty-two, twenty-two services, and so the, the footage about here, we would be replacing the service lines as well as the.
Are we adding any fire hydrants to that?
No, our, our hydrant location, that's adequate. Um, upsizing the line would increase fire flow and that's kind of um.
Sure.
Besides looking at the failure part of it, that's the other positive piece to that replacement.
Right.
Yeah, but fire hydrant location there are every five hundred feet, so that speaks code and it's adequate, more than adequate for that.
Um, the Ellis Pressure Reducing Vault?
Yeah, we've had some uh, charring vault and a, this Ellis Vault on our CIP for a couple of years. They're aging, the Ellis Vault has kind of risen on our priority scale uh, in recent months. Uh, because we did have a leak there on some of the old iron fittings that are in there, so this is definitely something we want to uh, address and look at. It's a pressure-reducing vault that's on the top of the hill, so it takes all the Fiscalini pressure and then reduces that for the neighborhoods that surround there. Yeah, that, it was actually installed for the old tank that was up there for Top of the World. There, but it's still in effect, it's still necessary, there's some old bypass valving and plumbing that we can remove, that's aging, we can simplify it. But it's, it's some work that's um, we've been wanting to do and we have the budget to do, and we think that's risen high enough on our priority that we want to. Look at definitely executing that this year.
Can I ask that, um, as you go through the, some of these things, we know have been budgeted. For the current year's budget, and what we're looking at is additional. Money's needing to be added to the budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, do you know where they are on the list? I can't. Quickly, so can we know that, okay, this is, this is currently budgeted, but this is in addition to what's currently budgeted. Of the money, can we know that?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, Pembroke is new.
Pembroke is new.
Ellis Pressure is new.
Uh, well, it was on our, this is the CIP for this current year, though, in the fiscal year. She handed it over, so yeah, so it was um. A three as far as this year's priority.
But it wasn't. That's what I want to know, if it's already in the budget, but you're asking for additional. Money to be budgeted for the, this upcoming fiscal year, that's what I want to know, okay?
So yeah, Ellis Vault, uh, budgeted funds do not currently exist.
Okay.
Uh, domestic storage tanks, we'll move on to Stewart, which we do have some budgeted funds there as well as EPA fundings that is about ready to be awarded. Um, we are still in deficit of that project for a tune of about one point five. We do have that in reserves and um, we'll definitely be looking at. Dipping into some of those reserves to execute some of these projects this year. We have about six point one in reserves, so um. Agencies look at, especially for utilities, you need about twenty to fifty percent in your reserves. Uh, we have about two years of operating reserves uh, for water, so it's time we start executing some of these projects.
Yes, that does, so Water Department has three point two million, not mentally. Um, pretty even. WRF has about two point. Oh, not, two point seven.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on down to kind of non-treatment or non-distribution projects, um. Uh, as you know, we've been replacing generators at our system, uh, water has four backup generators for power at four critical locations. Um, we will be, uh, we, we budgeted and have permitted and ac- actually have authority to construct. Our rodeo ground generator that will be taking place in uh, June of this year. So our old thirty-year coming's good old generator, tier zero will be getting replaced. Uh, next would be Stewart Street, uh, they're all the same era and vintage. Uh, Stewart Street has weathered a little bit better than our rodeo grounds, which is why we chose to do rodeo grounds first. Um, but this will be the third out of four generators that we will be completing the replacement of. Again, we'll be taking it from a tier zero or kind of a gross polluter to a tier four, which is. Uh, much more better for the environment and um, more economical to operate as well.
What was the other, was Stewart's? I'm sorry, Stewart Street, uh, James, and what was the other one?
Um, Stewart Street and the La Mert. Uh, domestic water storage tank are the last two uh, backup power generators that have not been replaced.
And that's not working in, in anybody, that's a new item, new budget item?
That is a new one, yeah, generator for Stewart Street is a new one. And then you'll see in the following year, uh, twenty, what, six, twenty-seven will probably be putting the La Mert generator on there as well. Uh, so they, a little background on the generators, we've talked about this before, so uh, they performed well, we've restarted duty life cycle. They're still in operation, they are gross polluters, but as they start to fail, parts are not available for these nineteen eighty-six models. So then you start to come on to the fabrication piece of this, and that fabrication isn't a thousand-dollar part anymore, it becomes like a ten-thousand-dollar. Part that is obviously, you know, very integral to the operation. But when you start taking ten-thousand-dollar chunks for repair to keep this thirty-year-old item on, that's what kind of prioritizes that for us there. We'll move on to brass meter bodies, um, as we know, we're installing this AMI uh, quite rapidly, we're going to start getting data from that. From that data, we'll evaluate where we need to start with the brass meter replacements. We know that our twenty, twenty-five-year-old meters that are in the ground, as they age, they read less or more favorable to the customer. And uh. And it's also recommended by the AWWA, and it's just good standard business practice, so we'll be looking into replacing meter bodies. We're going to do a four-year replacement rate again, so we'll do about a thousand meter bodies. Every year, that'll help keep our budget intact and then kind of work through systematically through the system. So we don't have what happened to us about five years, years ago, when they all started to drop off all at once. At least we'll kind of cover that over the course of four years, so when my predecessor goes to replace them, at least they won't all drop off at once and. Um, let's see here. Rodeo ground reserves, so this is for the booster station treatment. Uh, facility there, rodeo grounds, this is the move to get it out of that hundred-year floodplain. Again, we're just submitting budget to that dollar, so that to get that built up.
Sorry, but that's not the cost of the total project.
Uh, no.
That would just be designed or something.
That's probably yeah, ten percent. That we're asking for.
Ten percent of the budget or a ten percent design?
Ten percent of project, yeah. Again, as we get closer with budget dollars, um, we'll kind of do a in- engineering estimate to see where we're at up to date. Yes, our foreb, we've touched on, uh, that'll take place in the next fiscal year, it was not a CIP project for this year as. The agreement was uh, executed in, at the end of twenty twenty-four, so that's why we have it on for next year's project. And that is looking to be about a hundred twenty-five thousand uh, for everything, um. Engineering. Materials. Labor and fence. Uh, next line out of there, we have the uh, VAC trailer, um, so that's wastewater's vacuum trailer for excavation and leak repair. Uh, we're about eight years old on that, we're starting to experience some problems there, uh, not expensive problems, but. Problems that take it out of service at critical times. Uh, while we can still get a good, there's a great use market for our trailer, for agencies that don't use them as often as we do. So we can get a pretty good surplus or purchase price for that, so we'll kind of use that as um, replacement cost. But we initially will have to purchase that outright, and so it's sixty-five thousand for a new trailer. And that'll be something that we'll look to um, upgrade or, you know, reinvest in a new unit about every seven or eight years. Unless we start fixing all the leaks and don't have leaks anymore, then we won't need a VAC trailer. Uh, we'll move on to WRF if there's no uh, water.
Anybody have questions on the water part? Okay.
Absolutely, thank you, um. Our, our chemical building, so everything, we, we know everything at the WRF is containerized. Metal containers, we've had the chemical building, which is our chemical dosing pumps, which there's about eight in there. Uh, so all the chemicals flowing through and then distributing out to the process or treatment process throughout those other trains. Uh, that chemical building uh, is metal, and again, it's been under corrosion because of the chemicals. It's really starting to fail and become some of the safety issue, so we're looking to put some of that cost in there to. Either replacing it or making it a little bit more operable and safe for the future. Uh, additionally, we have a shade cover, so um, any of those who've ever been on the tour out there, we have our booster pumps. Or our vertical turbines that push from the MF train or our um, brake tank. To the other R O one and twos, so we have two vertical turbines there. And then about a seventeen thousand dollar analytic set for TDS, pH, all these others. Um, we're looking to cover that and get that out of the direct uh, environment. When we're looking to do that, before we go into our pilot and start the process, because we'll need to upgrade that analytic device. But no need to end, update the analytic device if it's just going to sit out in the environment and continue to degrade in the fashion that this equipment has, so. Uh, also an analytics overhaul, um, UV system overhaul, so these are just some. Kind of preventive maintenance items that are just kind of coming back around, um, that we'll need to do some investment on. So chemical pumps uh, won't be a repair, that'll be a purchase.
And we have current budget for that.
We do.
So is that in addition to or same?
Let me see what's it, have four. No, that, that actually, if we have it currently budgeted, yeah, that would be fine, but we won't need that in addition going forward. Also, uh, we moved down the line to the sound enclosures, uh, we did a budget adjustment earlier this year. For the removal of that, so we can actually take that line out and off, yeah. We should be performing that uh, removal before the end of the fiscal year.
The sounding enclosures?
Interlogic system, so that is the um. The own operating system of H two innovations, this is their plan, so this is their operating system, this is their SCADA. So this is also how we get our reporting, and uh, if we go into WRF operation, it's almost a full-time job, this reporting. The monthly report, once you're processing, that has all the analysis and volumes and all that, that, that's about a, what? Seventy page? Yeah, so we look into. A subscription with them, so we could get the majority of that report and document already encapsulated, cool, so that way we can integrate that into our title twenty-two submission monthly.
You don't have a cost on here?
You don't have a cost on that, because we don't have word back from them, um, so there's an annual subscription. We're right now trying to negotiate with H L Innovations to see if we can get a monthly or an operational cost for that. So we're not paying twelve months when we're only using it for two or three.
Okay, so we talked once before about the sound enclosures for the blower, about the possibility of using those towards a shade structure. For some of the equipment out there, is that something you're still considering or not?
I want to remove them and check the condition of it.
Okay.
Sometimes you take those things apart and they just, you ever put together Ikea furniture and then tried to move it?
Yeah.
I'm afraid it'll kind of end up like that, so.
No, I just figured you'd take it apart and then.
If, if, if everything comes apart intact and we can reassemble it intact, then yeah, we have some opportunities to use that.
Yeah. I think that was something that John Elton had talked about a long time ago.
But yeah, I think he had talked about using it at the wastewater plant, and after we get some of the SST and those upgrades, I really don't see a footprint for that on the plant. I don't know, I.
I'm not seeing it there.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, it's something that when we remove, we'd store the material, and if there's a later application, we definitely install it and use it somewhere.
Yeah, especially the steel I beams.
Yes.
So you even have welded plates and bolts and setups, they could be turned into another structure release or, yeah.
And, and did you guys decide whether you're, you can take that down yourself, or if we have to hire somebody to? Because of the steel beams?
You know, with everything going on internally with wastewater and water, I, it's, it's something that I, I think we could task internally, but I'd really like it performed.
Okay.
I think we'll subcontract for it, uh, just because we've got so many other operational tasks that are operators, they, the, the water and wastewater operators need to do water and water work.
Yeah.
So it's, with like getting meters removed, that's getting our guys back out in the field every other month, two more weeks out of that. You, you know, so it's, it's something that we could definitely do in-house, but I think it'd be us to uh, probably subcontract it.
Neither of your departments have a very big staff, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Tony, you want to jump on into wastewater CIP?
Yeah, I'll let you, because I've got several things that were brought up in our last meeting, and I just want, don't want to. Excuse what's in the report, so if you go ahead and then I'll.
So uh, Superintendent Arthurs put a Ford F two fifty on there, we only have four, one four-wheeler.
Right.
In-house for wastewater, and it is a two thousand and eight. Unfortunately, a great portion of the wastewater distribution system is off-road, many manvols and many canyons. So Tony's requesting uh, a four-wheel drive vehicle to replace the current one, the current one, we surplus. And resale. In addition, um, there's a Ford Lightning on as well, water purchased uh, an on-call vehicle last year that was electric. Again, this is part of the Clean Fleet Act. Where we can, we purchase so many ICE vehicles uh, of that size, opposed to electric vehicles. Um, so the wastewater call, on-call operator for. The wastewater call on-call operator for um, again, for uh, wastewater, sorry. Uh, we'd like to purchase them like electric vehicle as well. Uh, with our P G and E uh, funding that's available. That is a two-vehicle requirement. So there's four thousand dollars per vehicle. We'll touch on that in the next um, agenda item as well. So that would be a prerequisite to purchase to, you need to, to get even. The, the basic deal is that you need to purchase two vehicles minimum. So we need to purchase that second vehicle. I think it'd be hubus for our wastewater operators on call and reducing that carbon footprint. And we will have the charging station at the plant for both vehicles as well. So. Um, we have that on the C I P list. Cool. Lift station A, Tony?
Lift station A. So lift station A is one of our older lift stations. We'd be looking to. Uh, upgrade the pumps and then also upgrade the bypass system. And we need a new. Fuel tank. For that uh, lift station.
Is that fuel tank is below ground?
The below ground. So it. And it's in right off the coast. So it has sustained a fair portion of corrosion. And we are worried that the secondary can see me. I'm not home.
Can you let everyone know where the, these lift stations are as you discuss them?
Yes, it's a. Where's that?
Yeah, it's on Nottingham. There's a space, bit of open space. I can't remember if the cross street. As a, not Dorset, but the one closer to the.
Huntington's the furthest.
Huntington, the furthest one. It's one of the, it's the one and I have to look it up.
With Rochester?
It's off of Nottingham, right off the.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I got the map up right now. Uh. Lea, Lea, Legaton, Lea. On the corner of Leyton and Nottingham.
Yeah. Over. There's a, there's a, a bench there, a little view shed. Towards the ocean.
So. Those are the items on that lift station. And it's also right next to the coast. So having any kind of spill. Even, even if it's inside this. The area. You don't want it to. Move towards the ocean.
Well, we don't want to spill anywhere and definitely by the Pacific Ocean. B four?
B four is the uh, lift station that is probably the oldest and most compromised lift station we have. This is uh, something that we're going through. We're doing a biological survey. We have plans. For. This lift station, we have a cost. And for this lift station, we again are going through the county to include the environmental portion of this. This will be probably completed in twenty twenty six. Just after we do the environmental.
Uh, Green Street, South of Tampa. It's the most furthest.
And that lift station has funding in uh, through the S S T project.
One point one or one point two?
One point two.
So that additional cost you see there is the. Efficient amount.
So the, the two million nine hundred.
That's actually, that's a total cost. So yeah.
We have one point two to go towards that. This is the one, is that the one we're talking about touring or we talked about touring trees?
Um, well, they're kind of connected. Four is the oversized one that over pumps B three. So we'd like to take you on a walk and show you.
So is B three the one that's on the other part of Greenspace?
Yes.
Just about this church?
Yeah, about a quarter mile.
Okay.
Yeah, down the road there. Um, that's the one with aging controls and. No SCADA. A phone dialer for when we have alerts, a good old sense of phone. So yeah, there's some. It's.
Actually, that. That is one of the last lift stations that we have had a spill. It's filled, uh, B three spilled.
January of twenty twenty one, when the generator failed to come on.
Yeah. And.
Yeah.
Part of that B one still because we got overrun. So those are both. Uh, very. Uh, in very. Compromised location.
So B four is the one on Green Street that you're heading out away from town?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the one that had the massive tree roots and everything in it?
That has multiple times we pulled tree roots out of that lift station multiple times.
I didn't mean to interrupt. If one of you has something you wanted to ask, sounded like somebody started to say something.
Yeah, interrupted anytime, guys. I don't want to just. You know, blow through this. If you guys have questions, please reach out.
What, what, what about the, this, this station that's near the creek by the lumberyard?
Lift station B one.
Is that B one?
Yes. So that one. We want, we'd love to. Do work on it. We rebuilt that lift station. When it flooded out. So most of the controls. Motors. New generator on it. But it is a susceptible lift station just because of its proximity to the creek. And it will flood out again. And there's better ways, but we're trying to pick. Pick and choose which ones.
There's some alternative. So we're looking into maybe hydraulically removing it period. Oh, if we could, but we're talking about going through like a bedrock hill there and hooking it back up to the system. So there's a lot of geo that we'd have to look at. We don't know if the environmental would be possible. I, I, I mean, I think anything is possible. There's always alternatives. But um, either that or raising it up out of.
Or even moving, moving the lift station. You can move. One of your options is if you put some merciful pumps in this, you can move your control station away up the hill. And just put a sealed lid on it.
Okay.
And then. You're flooding on that lift station minimized. I'm not guaranteeing anything about not getting flooding when it goes underwater, but. You, you definitely would minimize the amount of water that's input and all your controls are now up out of the floodplain.
Right.
You're cold?
So yeah, we do have that floodplain vulnerability, but operationally, it's almost a brand new station.
Right.
So. Couple of factors have kind of moved that priority down and made us focus on L S B four.
Lift, lift station B four. Is giving my operators, we do not want to hear that called out right now because right currently we have one pump. We're actually going to have to install a second pump before this goes in. Uh, but. To do it right. You need to. Basically redesign that whole lift station and. Need to new generator. The generator is one of the older, oldest generators we have. Needs new control systems. Uh, it's the lift station with the highest. Lift or it pushes the highest total head that we have. It's oversized because. We were back in the seventies, we were looking to expand south. That has not happened and I don't see that happening. So we're actually in the new design, we're dropping the size of those pumps down a little. And what that does is this lift station pumps into lift station B three. So during heavy rains, we. Don't over pump D three. That was one of the reasons why D three uh, spilled. Three years ago. It was trying to handle lift station B four and B three. Lift station B four. Has a fair proportion of I and I. It's not the highest percentage of I and I out of all the basins that we have. So.
Which is another reason for relocation.
Well, the lift station B four is not. Going to be totally relocated. It's just that we. We have actually done a lot of repair on the. On the, on the collection systems. We've re-pulled out pipe. We've, we patched. Several locations. We've seen uh. In a lot of the spare lots, we have Ys that we're supposed to pick up. The sewer main or the sewer laterals and those sewer laterals were never. Developed. So the caps on those have cracked. We've identified several and have replaced several of those cracked caps. And locations where we get root intrusion. Uh, we found several locations in manholes during the rains. We send out our guys to pull manhole lids. And we've located multiple areas of manholes where you can see water popping up. Where the sewer main comes in and then the clay goes and transitions to the cement. And the, the. The drain in the, or the ember in your manhole. So. We've actually seen water popping out of there. We've sent guys down in with the appropriate uh, the equipment. And we've tried to epoxy. There's a epoxy system with drilled holes into where the leaks are coming out and fill it up with epoxy. That has been relatively good. You probably had seventy percent return on that. Sometimes the leaks are so big that. You're just pumping in and it's going to avoid, avoid. So that, that's some of the. Items that we've been attempting to do to people are I and I. And if. You have neighbors that are plumbing their uh, gutters into the tell us. And we'll talk to them to have that. Removed and addressed correctly. We're also looking at our uh. Our, our municipal code. To uh. Have the, the laterals inspected. Prior to sale. So that if there's any issues in the laterals, pre-ruts. Intrusion from water. Roof gutters hooked into it, that that will now be discovered and be part of the. Sale. Sale. Thanks. So we're looking at this, our collection systems of one of our weakest spots. We are, I've been sending my guys out quite a bit. We need. With the new back on and the new camera, we're especially trying to get the camera put more into play as we go. And we've been discovering quite a bit of interesting things.
As you illustrated in the staff report or utilities. And they'll care, uh, directed in one of those pictures. So.
Yeah.
Okay, um, you guys ready to move on to, uh, I think we've touched on B four and B three?
The wastewater treatment.
So on the collection side, we also got the S S M P. That included in this.
Um, yeah, I'll kind of touch on that when we, the collection system. Okay. Touch on the treatment class stuff now. Um, so. Replace blower room roof and we have the lab roof as well. So as we get through this S S T. And have these E C Ms completed, we're looking to go back and now we have these new assets in these buildings. We're looking to put those new roofs on. That needs to be.
So, so in the lab. The lab building also contains generic existing generator. So they have the air intake on the roof. That is no longer necessary. We have. A lots of leaks in that roof as it is. So once the generator goes. We can pull that roof apart. And redo it and also get rid of some of the ventilation requirements for the. The. Old generator in that area. And maybe who knows, maybe we'll put a couple solo panels to run our backup. Battery systems in there. It has been proposed.
So these are new items for the budget, not something that's already budgeted.
And then uh, did you have the polymer?
You have, yeah, you have screw press?
Okay, well, the handrails on the north tank and. Uh, uh, north side gesture tends to be touched up and repaired, uh, repainted. So after they get done hanging all their pipes over the edges and scratching up the existing handrails, we'll go back in. And it's that portion on the north tank. Is something that we need to address and repaint in our scope of work. It's. The south tank will be in. In the uh, S S T project.
These four things are all new costs.
And then uh, replace uh, screw press polymer pump system. And uh, that's been ongoing. The one is that we're using now is the. A uh, diaphragm pump. We've had problems with it as a polymer ages in the tank. They start to see it clumpy. And the diaphragm pump will clog up. So we were looking at getting a parasaltic pump, which will pump all those. Lobes of polymer through the system and into it where. Does it cause our, our screw press to uh. Uh, well, yeah, I'll not see, but it doesn't cause, if you don't have polymer, you're not. Uh, able to block, calculate your, your, your solids. And then it won't go through a screw press. So it just drains straight down through into your drainage out of your. And out back into your system. So it's something that we need to address and, and address in a better way that we are. Now.
And that's why that's on there. Um, I don't think we need to touch on the affluent name through parks.
Parks.
No, we don't have anything on wastewater portion budgeted.
Okay.
There.
Okay.
Collection system will jump down to manhole cover replacement. So again, this is something those Pamrex lids that um, seal up the one-inch pickle and are sealed all around. One, one, one-inch pickle is five gallons a minute in a storm of them.
Wine, maybe wine court.
Wine court work is. Unfortunately, they'll last forever. And um, this is the more permanent solution. But yeah, so we've been going to, how many do you?
Generally do ten a year. When they were doing the streets, we did a hundred and eighty plus.
Yeah.
But that was an amazing deal and.
Well, that was, well, I mean, I could touch on that real quick. So that was Cal Portland, who was doing the uh, county pave. They, the county payment has been taking sections every couple of years and repaving it. Um. So in years past, they've gone and repaved, but they've covered our water G five. Control boxes for water shut-off valves, manholes, other items. So we're a little bit more proactive and I think we did an emergency budget. Um, adjustment back in twenty twenty two or three, so that way we could start to perform these. And that was over on the Marine Terrace Lodge hillside. Where they repaved all those streets. And so we raised all of our G five boxes and manholes at that time. At the time we did that, we put in Pamrex lids. So we're looking to kind of develop that out to the community to cut down on. Tony's I and I.
So we have been doing at least ten manholes a year. We're, we're actually down to where we've almost found every covered manhole that. I think we're down to like five or six manholes that are still covered. From uh.
Past paving.
Yeah, so.
So they don't leak when they're covered, right?
Yeah.
Problem is that the cloud can't get to.
So how many, um, how many minutes?
Looking at the bright side, man.
How many manhole covers do you have left that you need to replace? And since twenty thousand dollars, how many, is that ten manhole covered?
No, that, that's meant, so that would include. Other, other fixes, like if we had a pipe. Where we had root intrusion. So we have something on earth that we'd be repairing. It, it's, it, it would include. It would include those, but that's not the total sum of what's happening in that hundred thousand.
So is it one year, you want twenty thousand dollars worth of twenty thousand dollars a year?
It'd be thirty, twenty. Twenty, what's your percentage? Um. Of manholes in the system that have been tamrexxed?
Probably.
Five, ten?
Yeah, five, ten, fifteen percent.
Uh, interesting. Right. Once the tamrecks are installed, they're pretty much good for life. But uh, we've only replaced by ten percent of this. So. This will be ongoing for years. Uh, collection system. Uh, collection system, condition survey and engineering report. So this is something that we had come up internally. Um, this is something that we want to use to kind of prioritize future distribution system repair, replacement. We want to look, uh, at the whole system, which is about sixty one lineal miles.
Yeah.
Um, look at the whole system, look at our vaults, uh, where we join and, you know, lies and we. Connect to other parts of the system and see where the failures are within that. And then again prioritize where we want to come back to eliminate that R and I, I and I in those locations. And have those required. So that would be kind, this, this assessment will kind of be, uh, our method of prioritizing for repairs in the future.
Yeah, and it's also required by the state water boards to do an audit on your sanitary sewer management plan. Which includes all, all the sections, all the jetting that we've been doing. All the, uh, all the pressures that we've made to the collection system itself.
And with that, that sums up our C I Ps for utilities. Any questions?
Out of all of these things that are on these lists, the only things that's in the front. Year's budget if they. Those are the only two things that are already in the current budget that you're just asking for money or are we eliminating those two things? In the W R F.
Yeah, sound enclosures, but, um, the chemical pumps will be in addition. And then the sound enclosures, we've done a budget adjustment for, but I don't know.
So on page ten, the sound enclosures for the W R F. You said to take it off. Yeah, yeah. Sound enclosure, chemical pumps is coming off.
Yeah. We'll execute the sound enclosure before the fiscal year and then the pumps can come up because we already have that on the C I P petition.
So everything else on here is a budget request for twenty five, twenty six. Okay. So, um, so these are one question, I'm really, the U V overhaul. We do have. U V bulbs and U V ballast that are budgeted this year. So would that be part of that overhaul?
Um, actually, I think, well, that, so the U V overhaul probably takes place this fiscal year since we have that budget in. And that's about, um, seven grand. So we can remove that from the W R F as far as the U V. System overhaul.
Yeah, so U V system overall on here for twenty five, twenty six, I don't know, fifty thousand.
Yeah.
But in the current year, we have budgeted for U V bulbs and ballast.
Right. And, and so they're scheduled in May.
Would we not need the system overhaul then?
Once we get it evaluated, we'll see and we'll revisit this. I think, um, superintendent Meeks put this on there as kind of a catchall or. They'll say, um. So maybe right now I'd like to leave that on there. Just until we get, um, any evaluation back.
So, um, we're supposed to be, um. Considering forwarding this is list to the finance committee for review for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year preliminary budget. So does anyone have any other questions about any of these requests for the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year budget? Any questions on any of these items?
When do, when does this have to be submitted to finance committee? Is there a deadline?
Preliminary budget is going to finance in their meeting in May, which is the second week of May, I think. So I'm gonna need. By May first, I'm gonna need to pretty much have the full preliminary budget done. So you need to note today whether we're approving forwarding this. Okay, did you have questions, Mark?
No, I think I got it all. I just wondered when, when, just kind of thinking through the whole process. So you just, you submit it to finance and then they, then they, uh, recommend it, uh. To, to the board to be, to be voted on?
Yeah, so we're reviewing the enterprise fund, C I Ps, water wastewater and W R F. The finance committee will look at this, but they will also look at the general fund budget requests. And I'm hoping this heater system is on there. Anyway. Yeah, it does. It works really well. Anyway, so they will be reviewing the general funds. C I P requests for twenty five, twenty six and then looking at what we're submitting to them. So, we review enterprise funds, they review the general fund stuff. So basically what you need to know is. Do we agree with what is on here and recommend forwarding it to the finance committee? So, does anybody have any problems with that? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Forward the recommended, uh, alternating to the finance committee.
Yes, okay, second?
My second.
Okay. Hey, I'm going to do a, a roll call. Mr. Webb?
Hi.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Mr. Grummel?
Hi.
Mr. Howell?
Hi.
And Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Okay, so that's got unanimous approval to go forward to the finance committee. Now we're going to discuss and consider the acceptance of funding from PG&E and Air Pollution Control District for E V fleet charging project. Consideration for a recommendation to the board of directors.
We've got a couple of different funding mechanisms that we've been working on. The A P C D for the better part of six months and, um. The P G N E piece, uh, was brought to us a couple of months ago as well. Um, we'll touch on it here a little bit. So we discussed how, um, our on-call vehicles for the operators, the water wastewater will be electric. Um, we need charging at the plant. Uh, we also are looking at the electric tractor as well. So the charger that we're installing that would cover all three of those vehicles and future use. Um, would be a level two charger which would charge at the rate of forty five miles per charging hour. Which is pretty good. And when you get into level twos and so forth. Um, anyway, so we've. Reviewed and submitted all this to the A P C D, the charger, the location, the load calculations. Uh, backup power and so forth. Um. And so they're committing, uh, basically fifty percent of that cost, a cost sharing half of the project cost with us, which is nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars. Uh, P G N E is giving us four thousand dollars per vehicle. We will need to maintain. Uh, vehicles in this for ten years, part of this contract. I don't think that's a huge obligation for us. I think it's something that we do internally anyways. Um, P G N E will get our data for charging. They want to see how long the charge, how much kilowatt usage. So that's their intentions with this is they will get that data. Um, it will probably be a little bit of a lift for us annually to present that to them. Um, what I. I don't think I talked about in here is we did receive a free charger from Ford Pro when we purchased that Lightning. This is the charger that we will install. So there's another about four thousand dollars off this cost that we can kind of incorporate in there. Um, but that charger will give us all the charging data. We can separate vehicles. We can tell you how many. K dub per hour, how many miles were charged, how often was charged. So we can separate this data and parse that out for P G N E. Um, pretty, with, with some ease, but.
I wasn't saying, I was under the impression that the model we chose, P G N E could communicate with that model directly and we don't even have to. We just have to agree to let them access the data in the much being stored by the charger itself. Which means that's more for us. We could still meet our requirements under that.
But you had a question.
There's, there's a little verbiage in there. Well, I have a little problem with the acronym because they divided the whole thing up between. The infrastructure and the part that connects to the car, but there, there's verbiage in there where the part that P G N E is responsible for. They, they, and I'm not objecting to it, I just, I'm just asking, uh, they do say, it is possible. It could happen that they would have to shut the power down to the charger. For some purpose. Uh, the question that I had is, do you have provision? Because since you don't, this would probably be under the emergency situation. Uh, so. What happened if you, you've got your vehicle needs a charge, but they, they've suddenly turned it off. So do you have like backup batteries or a hackup? And in the event that.
Well, we have the backup generator. Okay, well, that's, that's all. Yeah, we could still charge a one ten off of that, if that power were reduced. Or if we just lost power in that location. We also have our charge point charger out here that we have, uh, an account with an R F I D specifically for the vehicles that they can charge on. Yeah, we do have a little contingency. We try and think of everything, but again, that's why we bring this forward. So, that was a great question.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Love the idea, you know?
Okay, so you're gonna need a budget adjustment for this?
Um, yes, if we go forward this fiscal year, we have, we did not place this on the C I P. So yes, we would take this.
Okay, so this, if we decide, if we recommend this to the board and the board decides to move forward for this, this is gonna end up going on that same C I P list. For next year or it'll be a budget.
Yeah, I mean, right now we're in this very interesting timing. So I would meet with Jen and see, you know, um. I, we're just at a really interesting time because I could put it on the C I P list and get it approved that way to the preliminary budget. And that would give him permission to move forward with all of the things. Um, so if it can wait a month to get approval. I mean, well, actually it doesn't go before the board until June or in May, I would try and get it on the. Um, actual board agenda and then I could do a budget adjustment for this. This, it probably won't be spent in this fiscal year though, so it would carry forward to next. But it would become a project on the C I P list.
Okay, so I was just wondering if it needed to be on there for the finance committee to look at when they review this in man.
See, so I'm a little bit more aggressive with my timeline, especially when you consider the. It's my middle name. Um, it's better when, when you consider the tractor procurement. And we really need that level two forty four miles of charge per hour to operate that and charge that efficiently. So yeah, I would be a little bit more aggressive with my timeline and I think we're kind of internally looking for a May.
So it could go before the board in May and we could do a budget adjustment and I can, but just letting you know, it would become an active project on the C I P list.
Mr. Grinnon, I envisioned basically we would package the E V, um, tractor with this item, bring it forward, do a budget adjustment.
Okay.
That infrastructure will start to be put in place while we're waiting to deliver the tractor. And then once the tractor arrives, we get this infrastructure in place, then we're charging, we're ready to go.
Right, so currently as we sit on this project is, everything's been executed. Permitting, electrical load tests. Uh, we have the, the, the device, the equipment, the plumbing, we have everything. We're, we're ready to install this right now today.
I believe our electrical vendor of choice has already bought the equipment that he, on his end too. Quicker with it, so he's sitting in inventory also, so.
I have a question. Does this, uh, will this, um, level two charger be interconnected to a generator? In case there's a, there's a power outage?
Oh, yes. Yes.
So there's a transfer switch, automatic transfer switch that will take this to the generator? It'll be.
Wastewater treatment plant and it'll be running off of that generator. Basically, we're taking some of the old blower component or blower. That were part of the old plant and we're using those circuits to power. Power this. So it's all connected to the wastewater treatment plant generator and.
Which has an A T S.
Yeah, transfer switch.
So yeah, to answer your question, Mark, it, it has an automatic transfer switch. It would be, it would be part of the backup plant power generation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
How many chargers are you gonna have when you're done?
Uh, I, I envision our long term having two. Chargers, potentially three, depending how much more electric vehicles or equipment that we procure. But for two trucks and a tractor, um, I see two as being more than sufficient.
And you're not gonna go for the fast chargers?
Uh, they're hard on batteries. Those D C chargers that pump eighty K dub and more are really hard on battery life. In fact, you should precondition your battery before charging one decent charging. So, um, yeah, I'm not really, I don't think the D C charging that, we don't, I don't think we really require that fast of a charging. I think if we get out, we use our tractor, uh, four, six hours a day, we come back in, plug it in at five o'clock, it'll be ready to go for us the next day.
Yeah, but what about your other vehicles?
Um, well, that's where we'd have to rotate. We'd have to supplement with charging here if need be. Again, we'll kind of have to see how the, how the cycle goes. We, we kind of envision like how wastewater would charge theirs on a Monday. They come in Tuesday afternoon, Monday afternoon, charge for weight waters truck. And we will have to just see how that pivots in with the, the tractor.
This charger on here doesn't have backup power, does it?
No, nothing here has back.
Yeah.
Nothing on site. Although we do have a pin and sleeve connection that we installed years ago, that we could pull in. Um, oh.
Any other questions?
What's the status of the chargers that were discussed throughout here?
Just gonna ask that.
Very good, so. I mean.
The Slow County came back and they were not awarded the grant.
Yeah, so an alternative location was picked, a more higher, I guess, traveled. Yeah, heavily traveled portion.
Thank you, I was thinking the same thing.
Was there Wellsana and the one oh one that ended up with it? Or was it more northern Monterey?
I thought they didn't get the grant at all, but maybe I'm wrong.
Okay.
I'll double check.
Yeah.
They sent me an email, but basically, yeah, we got the, thanks for all the hard work, but unfortunately.
Well, that's too bad.
I'm, I'm sure they're gonna target it again in the future. It's not, it's not something that's gonna go away. We'll probably cycle back to the discussion again in twenty twenty six and beyond.
Okay. If there's no other questions, if you have any question, okay. He's very quiet. If there's no other questions, can I have a motion? To consider forwarding a recommendation to accept the funding for P G N E and, and Air Pollution Control District for the E V fleet charging project. To the board of directors. Motion?
I saw, I don't have to repeat it all.
Okay, Mr. Grumman, second the motion. Okay, the roll call, Mr. Howell?
Hi.
Mr. Grumman?
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Webb?
Yeah, I.
Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Okay. So now we're gonna review our recent Brown Act training and our, uh, community services district standing committee bylaws. And I did ask all of you in February to please read the standing committee bylaws. And so I'm just gonna ask you if you have any questions. You need me to walk you through them or did everyone read some? Okay, okay. I don't really need to go through them then, do I?
I think so.
Okay, and I think all of you attended the Brown Act training. So are there any questions on the Brown Act training that you received earlier in March? No? Okay, and everybody understands what a serial meeting is? And what a hub and spoke meeting, is that what it's called? Hub and spoke meeting is? Okay, so you know that you cannot have discussions and make decisions outside of this meeting. Okay, I have. Okay, um, we have been trying to schedule. A tour of the wastewater treatment plant in combination with the finance committee and also a tour of the list station. And the meter installed. Yes, we, we're gonna do that when we tour the wastewater treatment. And we don't know yet or unless Ms. Dodson got an answer. Uh, on whether we can do a list station at the same, on the same day or not, because it is a different address. We can do it on the same date. I think I would just have to post two different agendas to post the.
Two special meetings.
Yeah, two special meetings on one day. Okay, so the date that the finance committee has reached a consensus on. Was May twenty, uh, June twenty fifth? Is that correct? I wrote it downward. The tentative date.
Yeah, is that a Wednesday, I believe?
I don't know, I just heard the date today. June twenty fifth at one o'clock. What day of the week is that? At a Wednesday? And was it, um.
That's a Wednesday.
Were all of the finance committee members available that day? Do you remember?
The discussion I heard today was yes.
Yes, okay, so. Yes, okay, so how are you guys all with June twenty-fifth at one o'clock to tour the wastewater treatment plant? See an AMI meter installation and possibly an additional. Posted um, meeting to see the lift station, if we can fit it in on the same day.
So starting at one?
One o'clock.
I don't think about good portion of the afternoon. Uh, remember by the end of June, we'll be pretty well through um, some of the SST, there might not be some accessible points to the plant. But it'd be fantastic, you see some of the groundbreaking and.
That'd be great.
Go see that new generator.
It's there right now. Twenty, when does that go in?
Uh, they haven't given me a schedule on this, but that is, uh. Yeah, that's gonna go in probably. Midsummer.
Did they already upgrade your transformer?
They, we were not required to upgrade the transformer.
You're staying with the Delta system?
It's, I don't believe it is a Delta transformer. I'm, so they, PG&E came out and looked at the transformer. And it said that this transformer was well within the capacity of the, the requirement requirements. I don't believe it is a Delta transformer, they opened up the cover and verified that.
Wasn't there something that needed to be changed, because it was a three-wire system and needed to be a four?
We thought that.
Yeah.
Oh, you did already get that?
I do not believe, I believe it is, I mean, four wires, just.
Okay, just.
At the, at the transformer coming in.
Yeah.
What is being changed out is, it's gonna come to a new meter panel, the uh. We're gonna have the generator coming in at a box, because the generator will be outside. And it'll join in, and then we'll have the transfer switch will be. Inside the buil- the uh, MCC one area. So.
I thought they were gonna upgrade your heaters and everything because of doing this charging system and all of that.
They. They are, they, there will be new heaters, right, from the box to the entry. And, and to your meter panel.
So are they gonna bring the neutral in, or they're just gonna leave it out in the transformer?
I believe the neutral's coming in, and I, from my understanding is, is that they're. That the, the transformer is a, a Y. And what's coming in. I think we would, they.
You don't need to have the neutral if you don't need it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just needed their, add to transformer.
But I'm not even sure that was the problem, I think the problem was is that. One of the main reasons why we're getting quite a bit of prop issues is that when they pulled the influence pumps or affluent pumps through. We had a short, they pulled that actually out part of insulation off of the feeders or the influent pump. And so when we started getting water and the water table rose, or we had quite a bit of water running through our conduits. It was shorting out the influence pump station and dropping. Quite a bit of our, um, we're had, that was the major problem that we had two years ago. So we ended up re-pulling all that whole section of uh, one.
We'll revisit that with uh, South Home too.
Wide system if you're not.
Yeah.
I believe the generator is a Y.
Well, yeah, but your, your transformer and all that's gotta be a wide system for protection of your equipment. It keeps you from getting damaged to your electronics.
Right.
So a Delta system is just.
Cheaper.
Well, it's, it's cheaper, but it's more dangerous for electronics.
Right.
For equipment.
Can I ask a question about, uh, you had a meeting scheduled for May sixth? Uh, with a wastewater treatment.
No, that changed.
Change, that got canceled.
That, that, that changed, um, it is now June twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Tentatively.
Tentatively, it's all, all of the finance committee members are available, I need to know if you guys are all available.
Yes. So we're canceling May sixth?
Yes. That was a potent.
Oh, that's right, I had one in here too.
Yeah.
Okay, so May sixth is out.
Yes, it's gonna be June twenty-fifth, and hopefully by then, we'll get to see some progress having been done at the wastewater treatment plant. And we're gonna see lift station if we can, between three or four.
Um, well, I mean, LS B four is the big, that's our project.
That's almost tone for most of us. So, okay, so if we can fit that in, but that will have to be a separate, agendized meeting. Okay, cause it's a different address, and we're also gonna see an AMI meter installation, okay? So we're, this committee's all good with June twenty-fifth at one o'clock. Okay, um, you had a future agenda item already um, for our next meeting, so go ahead and tell them what it is.
Sure, yeah, we'll be bringing forward the construction management piece for the Stewart Street tank into it. Um, it's a considerable amount of money, it'll probably take up the majority of our funding from the EPA. But it's a necessary piece, because we've stretched this tank project out to a year, because we can't take both tanks offline, as we've discussed before. This will be a year-long project, the construction manager uh, would be slated to be onsite for four months straight. While we're breaking ground, I mean, our one-foot concrete pads are gonna go down thirty-six inches, so. Um, along with the construction manager piece comes some certificates of inspection that we can do. So we'll save some money on the backend for some of the uh, inspection pieces. So uh, I don't know, the metal, the, not grading, but compaction and some of those other pieces that'll absorb. But that'll be an upcoming um. Agenda item for.
May twelve.
May twelve.
And then do you have um, other items that you're potentially going to bring forward?
What else is on ours?
We just now started talking about it, is there any agenda items that this committee would like to see on the agenda for May twelve?
Oh. The uh, annual water supply and demand assessment will be presented at, on the May, the May. Annual water supply and demand assessment, or S, S, Swater, what we call it for short.
Okay.
Swater? Okay, yeah.
Anything else? Um. We'll work on it as.
Yeah, I'm sure something will arrive.
I think we have.
Nothing's burning right now.
Think we have to have everything together, by when, the first? The Monday before the meeting. Okay. Okay, and then so our next R and I meeting is May twelve. Um, just to let you know, there's going to be a uh, special CCSD board meeting on April twenty-fourth to discuss the skate park, if anybody's interested. And then the regular um, CCSD board meeting is um, May eighth. So if no one has anything else, it is three thirty-nine PM, and I can adjourn the meeting if there's no objection.